Okay, I'm gonna call the City Ground Committee of the Hall. Meeting for Monday, April 22, 2019 to order. Corr Patrick, please call the roll.
President or Mayor Keith Hedrick, Deputy Mayor Lawrence Garish, Councilors Joe Rusk and Rochelle Carter, Excused or Councilors Jamal Beckford, Guadalupe Depot, and Steven Sheffield.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry. Finance Director Ron Yuhas and Corr Deborah Patrick also present.
Okay. Let's start with the city budget presentations. Who do we have for tonight? Let's start with Parks and Rec. That is on... Where am I here? Parks and Rec should start on 90. Mary, I'll let you start.
Yep. So our budget in Parks Recreation is broken down into two parts. We have our recreation side, which covers our programming and the beach. This budget this year is pretty steady as... Didn't go up. It's kind of stayed status quo where we've been over the last couple of years. So it's less than... It's not even a percent. It's a negative percent increase. So we've been able to maintain our level of service and still keep our budget within the line that it was last year. I will share with... Depending on what happens with minimum wage in the next year, this could be drastically different next year. So I don't know if there's any questions in anywhere that anybody saw anything that they'd like to ask questions about, but it kind of just maintains everything as where we were this past year.
No, I think my only comment is I didn't realize we had got so much in on beach receipts. It's amazing.
It's between the beach pass sales and the gate. And we sold out this year of beach passes with still the whole month of August left. So we improvised so we wouldn't have an additional expense, but we were able to... So we made that, you know, correction for this year. So we should have enough beach passes.
Any other questions? Okay.
So on our maintenance side, we're a little different. We're up by 18%, almost 18 and a quarter percent. The increase here is I've added some capital projects. There were some of the projects that came to you guys for your workshop in December. So I was asked to add those into my maintenance budget in regards to some of the projects, which is $132,800 increase in the maintenance side. That's to do the Eastern Point Beach fence around the playground, the driveway at the parkhouse once we get our garage in, redoing our press boxes at Washington Park, working on bleachers at Washington Park, having our lights evaluated on the ball field three. They're up there over 30 years and they're starting... The ballises inside are starting to fall apart, but the company that put them in doesn't exist anymore. So hopefully maybe we can work with Ground Utilities to see what we have to do to make those continue to work. And then some pavilion repairs because those have been up there for quite a while, too.
Is that the lights at the Bay Grove?
Yes. The one that also has an Osprey nest on it as of last year. So we have some issues with that, too. So I don't know if they think the wires are twigs because the bank of lights have gone out twice. So I'm not quite sure how we'll deal with that one because we can't actually remove that nest. So that increased my budget. And the other additional increases were $5,300, which is like our insurance for the house down... The houses down on the beach. I did have some increase in the pension and the medical insurance, which are numbers that are given to me from the finance department. So, you know, if we can get these projects done, it would get our capital plan pretty much tied up for a number of years because this... Moving forward, there's very limited other stuff. We're still working on this... Whether that... Well, we'd like to finish the Tyler House, which I am hopefully going to be able to move forward with that. We'll see. But if we have to, we'll budget for that next year. Or we'll move some of this around. Any questions on this?
Questions on maintenance side, Councilor Russ?
Are these projects something that you can get done in a year realistically? That's a lot of projects.
Yeah, because it wouldn't be our guys doing it. Some of it would be contracted out. I mean, we'd have to take it out and get a fence company in. Obviously, that would be something I'd wait till the fall because we don't want it going out while the beach isn't in operation. A lot of it would be things that we'd have to go out to get companies in to work with us to do it. So it wouldn't be manpower on my end.
Okay.
So yes, we could get most of it done. They're kind of... They're small, but tedious. You know, press boxes. You have to work around the ball field schedule. You know, there's games going on there until the end of August. So a lot of fall projects, if we get it, or early spring. Early spring.
And we had a different... We had a different plan for the press boxes and that fell through.
Yeah.
So that's why I've asked her to put it on this year. Councilor Russ.
Was that the Avery Point? We had at some point had talked about approaching Avery Point, about helping with some of these projects.
Avery Point fell through and also we were working with the carpenters union and that has fallen through.
Okay.
We dug out... I mean, the press box and filled one, but roof right now is a tarp.
Right.
And it is used because that's where the square panel control is for the square boards.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments on Parks and Rec?
Only to compliment you, Mary. Looks like you did a real good job on the budget and you kept it as low as possible. Good job.
Thank you.
Anything else? Okay, that's it.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. All right. We'll do Building and Zoning, page 37. Make this where that is.
Yes. No, no, no. Right in the middle.
Good evening, Councilors and Mayor. Budget starts on page 37 as the mayor said. If we can go to page 39, which starts with the change of percent of increase to 285.81% up. We've kind of known this. We've talked about this a little bit prior to just showing up with it. And this is due to the fact that Electric Boat building the large assembly building inside the shipyard, which should start shortly. We've got a couple of small areas to go through and they would like to bring plans in May or June of this year for foundation work, start foundation work in July. So with that, we're going to go to page 40, which is the cost center. And if we look at 005, is that the right one? 1.376. The bulk of the money is at the one point... The general support, 005, also known to us by my line items as contractual services. We're trying to plan a budget. I'm trying to plan a budget. When I say "we," I'm also with the finance department for 43 months, almost four years worth of budget at this time. We have a contractor that... We have a vendor contractor to come in and try to support this for the 43 months. Electric Boat would like a CO on this building at February 1, 2023. And that's why we've scheduled it out that far with this. And this way, we can encumber the funds year after year for the entire contract and not have to keep coming back year after year trying to figure out the number of hours that it may take because of weather, because of cost holdups or whatever that may come in at that time. So we would finance this. That's... Thank you. We would finance this through the financial plan. We estimate that the permit value that would come in this year would be about $3.2 million worth of permit fees that would come in. We need to... The finance director's been very clear. We need to see the money, as he would tell me, before we spend the money. So as soon as we get the first checks, that's when things would go into action at that time. And he calls it a... You call it a freeze. We'd freeze this piece until that check shows up here. They would like to bring it today, believe me. They're right there. They're kind of itching at the... To get going at this.
Yep. And these are... This is very similar, this 1.2, in the contractual being that frozen is similar to the $100,000. That was in the fire budget and the $2 million in the contingency. So those pieces are... They're budgeted, but frozen at that point.
So a couple of other line items that may come out at you besides the contractual services was the reserve for vehicle equipment. While we had... We were accelerating our... We were putting $16,000 a year away. With this permit fee that comes in, we would accelerate that to buy the vehicles in this upcoming budget year as long as the money came in because it was being offset and not coming directly out of taxpayers. It was coming right off the permit fee. So that's why there's a $45,000 ask. We get all the vehicles replaced at this time. And I think that's the big ticket items for the office area. If we could go to page Commissions, the Boards and Commissions on 43, which shows a 92.31% increase. In there, the biggest... The two largest one would be Zoning Board of Appeals. We are expecting a couple of hefty attorney bills coming in due to the EV project and the items that we've had to go through and going to go through. And the other piece that was going... That's going up is like we would... We'd like to finish up the mapping for the wetlands. Over the years, we've been requesting a certain amount of monies, which are spent to get certain areas of the city done. With the increase of this money, that would finish up the project of all wetlands mapping for the city of Groton. Pieces. Do I got anything else? And, oh, yes, the historic review. And we're trying to start to do our regulations over for the Historic Commission. And the Planet Conservation Development has helped us move along with the idea of the flooding that may happen in our historic district. They're exempt by building code, but we... If they... Someone does... If it does fail, we are supposed to raise it up in the air. People can't continue to do that because they wouldn't be insured. So the state has some programs out there that has looked at regulations to redo because of the historic district and because how can we get around this flooding situation? You think about where our historic district is, our certified one in the city, and it's all down in that floodplain area. And so this helps support that to get the regulations redone. Harbor management pretty much runs on its own. They've incorporated funds. They've, year after year, have put more money in than expended. I think we're... The last time we looked was probably about $8,000, $9,000, maybe closer to 13, I should say, maybe closer to 13 with this year's tally coming in. Right now, we'd be working on next year's money. It's this year's budget, but next year's voting season as it comes into us for the fees. They collect about... They collect about $2600 to $3500 a year in harbor management fees. Jeff Dezek does a good job of collecting those fees. He's our harbor master and gets them into us. And the harbor management group run by Robert LaFrance has been very active this year because of the different projects at Electric Boat and other facilities that are happening on the waterfront. So that's what I have. Do I have some questions?
Just a comment. It looks like the whole budget is contingent on a lot of things, but it looks like you're prepared for what you hope is going to happen.
That's correct. That's correct. That's what we've based it on. We're... I think everybody at Electric Boat, the city, the planner, the finance director, the mayor's office, all have been working up for this point of the permit. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Okay, hearing none. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay.
This budget includes two main items on the Planning Department as well as the Planning and Zoning Commission. And you had heard from Sierra and Patrick two weeks ago regarding the economic development side. I'll cover the planning and the Planning and Zoning Commission. Now I'm going to speak to page 49. The Personal Services are... I believe it's been covered on the benefit side. And there is a reduction overall there mainly from salary for the subtotal. Highlight the operating expenses. The advertising and office supplies have remained unchanged. As you know, it's hard to anticipate how much advertising we're going to be doing depending on how many applications that we have. Professional development, I itemized out to cover licensing expenses for licensing, certifications, and training. That's required, and the train's required for me to keep my licensing and certifications. Vehicle operations and supplies covers cell phone as well as mileage reimbursement for trips to meetings or site visits. And the contractual services, there's four main categories. One, the biggest one, likely the unknown, is the legal side assisting with applications as well as if there's any technical reviews that we might need to cover on our own. You may recall that with the Electric Boat application, we do have the ability to charge the applicant for that one as well as other applicants for any type of expenses that are incurred to assist with reviewing applications. So that would still be exercised if necessary. But the other side is the legal expenses, which we do not get reimbursed for from applicants. We are also looking to continue our scanning document... Files and documentation. We certainly wouldn't be doing the full amount, but to get that started and to continue to do that on an annual basis until it is complete. And then allocating some additional services if there's work that's required coming out of the TIF policy, the TIF effort, as well as any recommendations that come out of the Thane Street planning work that we do, which that exercise will be completed by roughly July of this summer. Those are the highlights.
Councilor Russ.
Just one quick question. I know you said vehicle operations and supplies were your cell phone and your mileage reimbursement. Why over $1,000 increase from last year?
I believe I broke... My approach was breaking it a little bit differently. It was... There was... I don't know if there's any mileage in there or how the cell phone was in there. It was just a blanket number. I went in and I actually... As well, you can see it's rounded to $5. I've estimated how many miles I've been doing on an average basis every week.
Okay.
Barbara did not have a cell phone.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions on plan? Okay, hearing none. Thank you, Dan. That concludes our review of the budget for fiscal year 2019, 2020. We will continue with the committee of the hall. First thing that we will do... The next thing we will do is item 561, which is Ground Utilities Financial. It's item 61. Oh, wait. Hold on. You have a packet in front of you, but this is not the packet that we're going to review tonight. These are... This is the budget for 2019, 2020. You're required to have these by April 30 or in the charter. And you're required... You'll vote on them by June 30 or in the charter.
Right, and those will be discussed at the meeting committee in the hall.
Right. So this is our standard monthly G financials. Hopefully, you guys should have gotten something. I think you did.
We did.
Okay. Sorry, I needed to clarify what it is we're reviewing.
And this packet that you received was the exact same package that went to the Utility Commission? And that was approved last Wednesday? So it's the same packet? I know there was some questions last year, a request for some additional information, and we're working on putting some of that together. I think he has the FD piece that was asked. So we are... If there is something additional, you just let us know so we can try to get that information. So go with the March highlights. We'll keep it very short. Everything was fairly on track for budget-wise for the month. So I think it'd probably be more useful just to look at year-to-date and kind of just start with there, and then we can go backwards into the month if there's any questions with that. So for the Electric Division, if we start... I don't think these ones ended up being page... Page 48, it's kind of blocked. It kind of got into the bottom of the number. So in the lower right, you'll see Ground Utilities Commission meeting. Those are the page numbers. They'll be page 48. So for Electric Division, year-to-date, the actual revenues are $43 million or $1,003 over the budgeted amount year-to-date, or 3.2%. The total operating expenditures were $39 million or $1.3 million over budget, which again was a 3.6. The biggest piece there is the purchase power coming in over the budgeted amount. The net... If we look at line 52, which is the net income from operations, we are $31,000 over budget and the net income from operations are $3.5 million. So pretty much right on target from a net operations standpoint with the budgeted amount. Just kind of a quick overview. I figure this would be more useful than going through the month because the month was pretty much on target for all the divisions. So if we just wanted to kind of summarize it, these year-to-date to keep it. So Electric, like I said, pretty much right on target from the net income from operations standpoint. So if we flip to page eight, we'll kind of go through the same thing for the Water Division. This one is a little bit different, which you've been seeing it every month as far as where the net earnings are coming in at first budget. So the total revenue year-to-date is $7.8 million, $7,000 over budget, which is pretty amazing over, you know, three quarters of the year and where the budget was in with the $7,000 of revenues. Or the total revenues, actually $3,000, because I got the total water... The total on line 21. So it's right on target with the budget. The operating expenses, and this is where we've talked about the last month, that they are actually under budget by the $1.1 million or 14.9% based on timing of hydrant flushings and certain things that happen during the year. So it's not quite a 12-month divide. And I believe there may be some positions that have been budgeted that are not filled. So when we look at line 44, the net earnings before the Drinking Water State Revolving Fund grant is $1.2 million. And the budget was actually for a negative $567,000, which would have used the retained earnings to balance it. So it's $1.8 million to the favorable side. And again, that's based on that shortage in the operating expenses. And then the other piece of that is with that grant coming in, there was a projection for the donation piece of doing work for the interconnects, and that hasn't been done yet. So there's kind of the two pieces of that. So that's why that number's coming in above budget. And then if we flip to page 58 for the Sewer Division, the total revenues are $3.2 million versus $3.7 or $500,000 under budget. Again, it goes back to the prior summer with the deducts. We'll probably see that again, maybe not so much in May, but potentially in June if the weather ever breaks. The total operating expenditures were $1.9 million or $244,000 under budget. So we go down to line 37, which is the net income from operations. It's one... We're right at the million-dollar mark for the year-to-date as far as the income from operations, which the budget amount was the $1.2 and so $235,000 under budget. And that's again the combination of the shortfall and the revenue from the deduct meters and then coming in under the budget for the operating expenses. So it's kind of the utilities in a nutshell. Everything's pretty much on target with the exceptions of the things that we've talked about.
Any questions on Ground Utilities Financials? Okay. Next thing, we'll go to 742, which is Ground Utilities. We have three resolutions to review.
The first one I have is the Huber Intakes Filter Screen. I believe a lot of you are familiar with the PAF and the intake room in the PAF. There's actually a screen right up in the front that helps remove debris that's coming into the plant, and it's an automated screen. There hasn't been maintenance done on that screen for five years. So when we got a quote from the manufacturer to do maintenance on it, they quoted this quote here, so over... Slightly over $20,000. There's a lot of parts that are worn out and need to be replaced. And when they came in and actually looked it all over, they said, "You really got to get this fixed and get it done." The maintenance on that unit should be done every other year. And it shouldn't cost $20,000 every other year. It should cost a lot less than that. So this was not in the budget. It wasn't identified in the budget by a line item or anything. So we decided to put that through for approval and move it forward. Yes?
Councilor Jeff.
So this sort of fell through the cracks, basically? I mean, was this something that should have been on the radar?
It should have been on the routine list to do every other year, yes.
And what would be that average cost for an every-other-year maintenance check for this?
They normally... They normally come in and take a look at it real quick to see what parts and pieces are, because if you actually look at the quote, there's a lot of parts and pieces. So in one year, it might be a little bit higher. And I'll... And a guesstimate would be, you know, $6,000 or something like that based on how much maintenance you do on it. In prior experience, we actually had a maintenance contract on these. In other facilities, we did quote and do a maintenance contract where the contractor would come in as much as twice a year and just check on it to do preventive maintenance to prevent you from spending a lot. We haven't gotten that far. After they update and do this work on it, they may very well give us a quote to do a maintenance contract like that, but they have not quoted anything like that as of yet.
Well, would we request something like that for them to...
Oh, yes.
Get a quote? Get a quote, I mean, they're not gonna, we would want them to come regularly.
Right. It's a good way of levelizing your maintenance costs, do maintenance contracts on equipment as a general rule.
Excuse me, councilor.
This is at least the third time we've had something come before us that wasn't done on time for the pollution abatement facility. Can we get a maintenance schedule for everything that needs to be done there? So that we're not blindsided again with the $20,000 bill or a higher bill for something that should have been done in routine maintenance? I understand that things come up, but this is the third time in the last two years probably that something has come up that just hasn't been done on a routine maintenance schedule. And I know there's other things that need to be done that haven't come before us directly. This just can't keep going on. Something needs to change.
Well, there's a, Rick and Ray are currently going, they actually went through the whole facility and we developed a three or four or five page list. It's actually quite extensive. And that list has a, has a multitude of things. It had the underground storage tank. It had this on the list. And they're going through that list right now and updating everything that exists. And what they knew by the time we hit the budget is in the current budgets that's there for approval. And the goal for all utilities is to have a fairly specific, levelized routine budget. I understand your concern and we're working to remedy that concern.
So my question is, we're going to get through this budget season and do all these repairs, which means there's a big cost all at one time. Can we get a schedule that says this is how we're going to go forward? And these are the things that need to be done on a two-year basis. So in 2012, or 2020, we're going to do this one, and in 2022, and in 2024. And then this needs to be done every four years. So we have this mapped out. You have this mapped out. We have the schedule for it all. So we know when things are going to be done.
Yes, that's the way we do all our budgets.
Okay, but this hasn't happened. I mean, this is at least the third time in the last two years that some things come before us that hasn't been done on time. So I'm hearing what you're saying. I'm just saying, in the future, can we have it very mapped out on this is when the maintenance is getting done?
Yes.
Thank you.
The water division.
Thank you.
Will do that.
This is pollution, isn't it? Not water.
Water division runs the PAF.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions on this resolution? Need a motion to move this to the mayor and council meeting of 5:20, 2019.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion to the second. Any further discussion? Hearing that, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, suspension, the motion carries. Any B and W paving, Walker Hill?
Walker Hill, the, the Walker Hill tank, how much, did, I wasn't at the meeting last week. Did he pass out a map or anything? I'm going to pass this this way. I think a little bit more visual, so I wanted to explain where this work was. As the Walker Hill tank has been replaced, there's a goal to get the tank to run seamlessly with less hydraulic, I'll call it hydraulic drag, or less back pressure, or loss of head as you fill the tank. So this job is to replace the highlighted portion of Walker Hill Road and Tollgate Road, which is basically from the tank to the church, down the street, across the highway to the church. It actually replaces the line with a bigger, a bigger diameter line to reduce back pressure and head loss. This is budgeted bond project.
Yeah, they're replacing the line with a 16-inch line, digging it all the way down to the church. So they'll be digging up the road, replacing the line, and then repaving the road.
So this was a planned project to take?
The Walker Hill was, and this is part of it.
Okay.
There's actually one more segment also that, I'm not sure if they've started the demolition already, but.
Yeah, I don't know. They're supposed to start, I thought they were going to start this week or?
Yeah, it's like this week, so they may or may not.
I didn't drive up there yet.
But there's also a pump station going in at the tank also.
If you drive up to the tank now, you'll see the footing is already poured. So the, the base that they're going to mount the pump on is up there. I went up there the other day. It's ready.
Can I ask something, not specifically relevant to this, but the old tank? What's going to happen with the old tank?
It's just being demolished.
Okay. Do we know when that's going to happen?
This week, starting this week.
It should start this week. I didn't get up there today. But it's, the report I got from Rick and Ray is that, that it should start this week.
Fantastic. Thank you.
Anything else on this resolution? You need a motion to move this to the mayor, mayor and council meeting of 5:20, 2019.
So moved.
Okay, any further discussion? Hearing that, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, suspension, the motion carries. Any chromatograph?
The last item is a chromatograph for the water lab. This is actually for Steve Dietrich. We have a piece of equipment that has gone defunct and that it just recently became not supported by the manufacturer anymore. That being done, we moved, it was going to be budgeted for next year. In purchase, we decided to just move it into this year and buy it immediately because we really need this piece of equipment to run. Got a couple of quotes, the $22,000 quote won.
Any questions? Okay, hearing that, I need a motion to move this to the mayor and council meeting of 5:20, 2019.
Second.
We have a motion to the second. Any further discussion? Hearing that, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, suspension, the motion carries. Okay, thank you. All right, we'll move on to 748, which is donation request from Sacred Heart. We received this from Sacred Heart for a golf tournament. And. All right, thank you.
What, what's coming around now is, I kind of was anticipating the question as to where are we at in the current year with the 5,000? And then who in the past have asked for a request and kind of later in the year? So this goes back to '16, so it has the request from '16, '17, '18, and then the current ones for fiscal year '19. Just so you can see who, who had requested the donations, who was approved for the donation and how much, and then each year. So you can kind of have an idea.
Deputy Mayor Garish.
I have a question on this particular issue. It says this is to, to be supportive of the special education needs for the students at, at the school. Do you know if the Board of Ed provides any funding for your school at all for that?
Probably not, because it's a private school.
Private, private, yeah, it's private school, not public money. Because I know public schools.
Yep.
Provide that.
So to answer your question specifically, I don't, do I know one way or the other? I do not know, but I think, I do know this is a, this is a private school. And I don't think that the Board of Ed has jurisdiction over the private school. So they did a lot of their own fundraising. So we spent a little over $4,000. We're allowed to spend $5,000. So we do still have some room should the council decide that the one they want to donate and they want to move this.
We haven't heard from Reverend yet this year, actually.
No. No, we have not.
No, I'm just thinking. Sorry.
We're at 4,050? No.
Yes, that's correct. You're right.
Why don't we, why don't we maybe sponsor 150, 150 for them? That way, if we anticipate a couple, we still have, I mean, still have a decent amount, a respectable amount to give others, you know?
Sure. Okay, so 150. All right, so I need a motion to move this to the mayor and council meeting of 5:20, 2019, in the, in the amount of $150.
So moved.
Second.
A motion to the second. Any further discussion? Hearing that, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, suspension, the motion carries. Okay, last one is 749, which is the tax collector suspense list.
And this is the list that comes. If we could do the 159. Yeah, we'll put that as the election on when we fill out the application. So this is the list that we get annually from the tax collector at the town. What this is, this does not write off any taxes. It just moves them from the receivable to this, the suspense listing. They're still collectible. They'll still try to. But what they've done is they've made multiple attempts at trying to reach the individuals. These will be either personal property from businesses that most likely have closed and are no longer in business, and motor vehicles for people who have moved out of town and they just can't either find a mailing address or don't get a response to them. So this is the normal list. However, if these people do move back into town, try to register a vehicle, they'll need to pay this. It will be with a DMV.
Everyone's going to ask if that was reported to DMV.
Yeah. Every, every year we get this list and they go through. So you'll, if you flip through the list, there's, there's a lot of, there's a lot of them. And they're not for big dollar amounts, but as you can see, a lot of littles add up.
I looked through the list to make sure my name wasn't there.
And this doesn't include any real estate, because real estate, they would do a tax lien as opposed to moving to a suspense. So it's, when you look through it, it's personal property, motor vehicle, motor vehicle supplemental.
Now, is this informative or do, or do I require?
No, this requires an action.
It does require an action, okay. Then I will need a motion to move this to the mayor and council meeting of 5:20, 20, uh, May 20th, 2019.
So moved. Second.
Okay, we have a motion to the second. Any further discussion? Hearing that, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, suspension. Is there anything else?
Can we just go back to city budget presentations? I think this is where we kind of have the, the month, uh, the year to date, general fund expenditures.
Sure.
I sent an email out over the weekend with this, but I also have a copy as well. And this is just the expenditures year to date for the general fund, being three quarters of the way through the year. Percent remaining would be around 25% if everything's equal. And you can see that all departments are fairly in line with that 25% budget remaining. So there's, at this point, there's nothing that really jumps out as concerning from a department, any individual department. As we get closer through the, the end of this month, and then we'll kind of start taking a really closer look at all the departments and project out.
Councilor.
Our boards and commissions, why are they so low?
The first one, that's the actuary bills that the invoices have come in. They just have not been paid yet.
Okay.
So those are for the, the actuary evaluations for OAKR and Holcomb.
Okay, thank you.
And that's just a once a year.
Okay, that makes more sense then.
Anything else on this? All right, we do not have an executive session, but before we go, this is the last session. This is our last scheduled meeting for this session of this body. The next time that there is a mayor and council meeting, that will be with a different whole body. So I wanted to take this opportunity to publicly thank Deputy Mayor Larry Garish and Councilor Stephen Sheffield for all the years that you guys have put on. You've been here since when?
2013.
And you were.
I've been here. This will be my eighth.
Okay. So it's been a long time.
Great.
So thank you both for what you've done. I'll also invite you to the swearing in on the 13th where I will, again, recognize you and have something for you. But I don't have anything for tonight, but I will have something for that. But if you guys, Larry, do you have any?
I was just going to comment that I certainly have enjoyed serving on the council. The city is a very important place to me. And I've made some good friends, people that I didn't know before. And I'm sure I'm going to miss it. I'm going to stay active with the Democratic Party. And who knows, someday I might run again. But it's been a pleasure working with all of you. In addition to the council, the department heads, our finance director who's sitting right here, who I have to look at at every meeting. That's, that's, that's a pleasure. And, and to you, Mayor Hedrick, I wish you success in the future. I have to congratulate you for the fine job you've done so far.
Thank you.
A pleasure.
It's been a pleasure. And not that we need to be reminded, but Larry was also the police chief here and was on here. So has given service to the city since when?
1962.
Okay, so absolutely. So that is, accolades well reserved. So thank you very much. Stephen?
Ooh, I didn't expect this. It's been an honor, a privilege to serve the city. I didn't expect to become a counselor. And I'm really thankful and blessed that, to serve the city and to see the growth that we've done together as, as a family, as a community. One of the best experiences of my life as far as serving the people here in the city of Groton. And that's all I'm going to say for now. Thank you, again, Mayor.
Thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Okay, with that, I need a motion to adjourn.
I agree, adjourn.
Exactly.
Motion to the second, we are adjourned. Thank you.